...to get started from our meeting and the meetings that y'all have had. I think the paper did a good job reporting on your meetings last week. But to emphasize again that this is no additional taxes. It is a renewal of the existing taxes. Now, should the people vote to renew these? And the reason there has to be an election, and I think y'all thought ahead very well on this. The tax levy would actually go into place October 1st, 2022 for a collection in October 1st, 2023. So while that seems like a long way, the process of getting election and everything that goes with it that must be done is imperative. So I think y'all have done a good job. But let's open the floor for our commissioners to ask any questions related to that so everybody's crystal clear with the request. Gentlemen, do y'all have anything?
No questions.
Anything at all? Okay.
I just appreciate the foresight and moving forward and keeping everything running.
Very good.
Just forward information gives us.
Okay. So let me state again, gentlemen, what we'll have then on our agenda on Monday, on Tuesday, a big pardon, on Tuesday, will be four separate resolutions. One resolution for the two mill, one resolution for the four, one resolution for the county three, and one resolution for the county of the city three. So as I think ahead about that, Daniel, I think I'll need to prepare a ballot for the county, and then there will be a separate ballot for the city because you'll have one additional question on there for the city. Okay. All right. And let me say, part of this process is they presenting to the commission a petition of qualified voters and property owners in the county. And so I have the ProBET staff working on verifying those petition signatures now, and we'll have an answer for you on that for Tuesday as well. If we foresee any problems, gentlemen, we'll let you know. So, and also, let me ask you guys this. I think although there's four separate resolutions, and Scott, maybe you and Jeff weigh on here, I think that it probably would be okay for those to be explained and to be taken in a single motion. Do you think that'd be appropriate?
Yes, sir, as long as everyone understands that is the fact.
And then we'll spread the resolutions in full upon the minutes.
Yes, sir.
Great question.
Sir.
Mr. Green, Commissioner something about the one mill goes back to Sheriff of the State, does that have to be separate also?
Not to my understanding, Commissioner Armstrong, that is a deal that the people do not have to vote on in the county because it's levied by the state.
Right. And the ones that we'll be voting on in this special election, if approved, will then be in place for a period of 29 years. That's what I meant. Okay, 29 years. So we almost forget about it, forget about that it has to come back.
I won't be here.
You're saying.
All right. So, well, thank you very much, gentlemen. I know y'all have busy schedules. You're very welcome to be this guest.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll get back in order on our list. Sheriff Moon has not made it to be with us yet. Mr. John Luther Williams, Mr. John Luther Williams, are you present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're recognized, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we'd ask you to be considerate of the many items of business we've got to take care of here, but we'd love to hear from you. All right, thank you.
The Honorable Judge Green and the District Council members, Allen Armstrong and Ted Trapp, Mr. Dean Galbert, and Mr. Nick Washburn, who's not here today. I'm here to address the petition that the residents of Warrior Farms have initiated to seek relief from the unacceptable road conditions of Warrior Pass and Warrior Trail. These two roads have approximately 1.8 miles of road surface, and they connect us to County Road 26. This conclude has given each commissioner the materials that I gave to her office on July the 14th of this year. Included are photographs of the actual conditions at that particular time, and I figure a picture is worth a thousand words. But surprise, 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 11 days later, on July the 25th and 26th, there was an attempt to cover some of these potholes by having a road crew throw shovels of asphalt, cold asphalt, and it's hit the problem. We appreciate that work, but however, that was a short-term or short-sighted solution for a long-term problem. One picture I took was of a road culprit that is broken, and halfway across the road, you can't use it. And so that problem will be solved by shovels of asphalt and tar or anything else. But gentlemen, I want to speak to a pothole that is much more severe than anything you'll find on our road. There's no tar, no gravel, there's no asphalt that would ever fill it. It's what I would call the pothole of unmet expectations. Because for more than 20 years for some of our residents, we heard the same self-serving and empty political rhetoric. We don't have any money, and we can't have any equipment. The equipment we have is broken. We'll check with you later. We'll get back to you. We've got other roads that are worse than yours, which is probably true. So we've been navigating that pothole for 20 years. We feel as citizens of that area that we've been neglected, we've been unvalued, we've been uncared for, we've been unwanted, we've been disenfranchised, we've been disrespected, we're out of sight, literally, we're out of mind, and we're unneeded except when you vote or when you have to pay our taxes. Because of this pothole of unmet conditions or unmet expectations, there's a deeper and more growing pothole that involves not only Warrior Farms, Blood County, Alabama, but our whole country. And I call that the pothole of credibility. It's a pothole that I have to work about every day of my life. My family, my church, my community, my personal relationships, I need to be authentic and real and honest. Abe Lincoln once said to a lawyer that was questioning him about his profession, he said to that lawyer, "Reserve to be honest in all events of your life, but if you can't be an honest lawyer, then you have to be honest without being a lawyer. Choose a different profession." Now, I know for you gentlemen, that your job is not an easy one. You have to deal with more than just roads, and you have to deal with more than just maintenance of roads. But in conclusion, I would like to say, someone recently resurfaced a Fred Terry road in Locust Fork community. That was a good job. We could accept something like that. We also travel a lot, Highway 9. Two years ago, it was asphalted and done a perfect job, but for some reason, it was milled down to an older surface. And that seems to me very disconcerting when we don't have any money to build roads, but we have money to tear down good roads. And third, sporadically, you come across our roads throwing out shovels of asphalt. Save the money. Join it together. Do something more significant when you come to repair our roads. The Band-Aid approach is not working there, and it hasn't worked for the past 20 years. You've going to save the money and resurfaced our road entirely. That'd be smooth. Finally, if God permits, and I hope that for the next 20 years, it may be repeated out there in our community or any community in Blood County, we're not asking that you give us preferential treatment. We don't want to be put at the head of the line. All we want to do is be considered and treated fairly, adequately, and justly to meet the needs of our community. Our desire is to have safe roads that are efficiently and consistently maintained. This we want for every citizen in Blood County. So thank you for your assistance. It's a stopgap method. Thank you, but it's not going to solve the problem.
Mr. Williams, we're glad to have you here today. We give Commissioner Armstrong an opportunity to respond if he'd like to and not like to say something.
Y'all's road was on the list to be passed, as well as many others. We've had over 25 inches more rain this year than any other time.
Did you say patched?
Yes, ma'am.
Not paid?
We have a list.
No, that's what I'm saying. We came out there the 11th, but that was already planned before you sent this in. I mean, I think that we can always spend on major collectors, which are highly traveled roads and bridges. So County Road 9 is a major collector that we can get federal funding for. We can't get federal funding for a road such as Warrior Pass.
Right, I understand.
Or a road that I live on. I can't get federal funding.
Put it down and rip it up.
What? Nothing was ripped up there.
You what?
Nothing was milled up on County Road 9.
It was, too, sir. Yes, sir. It was.
My understanding on that, Mr. Williams, there was a sealer surface put over that.
We put a sealer surface with a small rock, 89T, and then come back with a box seal.
So it made it look like a different texture than it was, but that was a coat that was put on the top. But anyway, we take your comments to heart, and we're going to keep working on it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, too.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's not an easy job.
Do we have with us Mr. Dave Evant?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. I didn't see your hand.
One of the problems on our road from Warrior Farms is gravel. The potholes, of course, are, but there's a part that's beginning, no, the cul-de-sac is too long. There's a naked gravel, and it washes down the sides of the road, and comes into my driveway, and it's washed into my glass, and it's just pouring out. But I don't know how you deal with gravel, loose gravel.
Yeah, with the amount of rain we've had this year, it's just been 30, 40 inches every few days, we've been getting there 15 months a year. So we'll get out there and look and see what we might be able to do. No promises of anything, but like I said, we're stretched thin.
Thank you, ladies. Dave.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you for your position as County Commissioner. Chris Calvert, a few minutes ago, Dallas Man. I've known Dustin for several years, and just kind of talking about my company and what I do and what I've done for other counties. And I'll give you a quick synopsis. In 2008, the legislature passed some legislation creating a solid waste trust fund. And what that fund does is start collecting in 2009, a dollar a ton from all the landfills. And of that dollar, 25 cents goes to remediating or cleaning up illegal dump sites and/or UAD-slash-scratch tire sites. And what my company does is, I contract currently 17 counties in the state of Alabama to provide assistance with the counties in getting these sites remediated, cleaned up, funded, and off, basically off the radar. It's been a win-win for the counties. The county gets some goodwill out of it for cleaning up the sites. The county is reimbursed any out-of-pocket expenses for it, and the fund pays all engineering fees and consulting fees. So it doesn't cost the county anything to enter into an agreement with regional environmental services. Like I said, we've been doing this since 2009. We've cleaned up over 280 sites across the state of Alabama in counties like Monroe, Bullock, Macon, Green, Perry, Hale, Sumter, Washington, Choctaw, Clark, Wilcox. We've been doing this a long time and have a good relationship with folks at A M and have a good relationship with the landfills that we use nearby. We've kind of tried to keep all the work off of the county engineer. Obviously, in most instances, he oversees what I do, but we work closely together. I would submit a cost estimate for the county, a remediation plan for the county, and oversee the actual day-to-day of the cleanup of the scrap tire sites or the illegal dump sites. So that's kind of a quick synopsis. I'll be glad to take some questions, or be glad to come back another time and answer questions.
Sir, the question I would have there, would we, if we contracted with you, would we pay you directly and seek reimbursement then from this fund? Would we explain a little further how that would work?
Yeah, how that works is, okay, so there's a site that gets approved from A M to be remediated, and it's in the Chris Calvert district. And he wants to pursue the cleanup of it with his folks or county forces, so to speak. Then we would go clean it, remediate the site. I would submit the paperwork after we've done it to A M. A M will send the inspector out to approve the work. I would submit the paperwork for payment. Payment would come to the county, and out of that money would be the reimbursement to the county as well as the fees for the engineering remediation plan as well as the administration. So you won't have to pay my company until you receive the money from A M.
Okay. Well, wow, that sounds like a plan. Commissioner Trammell, do you have any illegal dump sites in District 2 that Mike could work in with this?
We have several places that look a lot like these pictures he's got right here.
I'm sure most of the county does.
I've got a few.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Calbert, I said, you've been, I don't know about Commissioner Washburn, but there are, if there are some places, gentlemen, what would be your feeling about that?
I've got an agreement here I could be glad to leave with the county attorney for them to review. If the county so moves to consider moving forward, I'd be glad to.
Well, sir, if you leave that right here with the county attorney for review, and we'll, yeah, sounds good.
You know, if you have a couch on the side of the road and a bag of garbage scattered down the road, that's not going to qualify. That is going to be considered lethal. So it needs to be a site where people are coming to dump. It doesn't have to be, you know, a mountain of trash, but it needs to be a site where people, more than one person is coming to dump.
Let me ask this.
Yes.
What if it's on private property?
If it's on private property, A M will get a site access agreement before they send the county any information about us moving forward. So yes, we will have a site access agreement for consultants, engineers, county folks, contractors, anybody to access the property.
Given I say that, we have a lot of stuff in my district, and there are some trails that run out to, and sometimes they'll start a dump site on the trail. So that's really been a problem.
Yes, that's not, right of ways is not a problem, private property is not a problem. All that work will be done on the front end. Yes, sir.
The only problem I see is getting bombarded with phone calls. We need to try to, do we let Dustin handle, you know, it's got to take 200 cubic yards. People don't know what 200 cubic yards are, and it could be running all over the county trying to clean up, see if it's going, A M is going.
I'm waiting, and we'd have to just wait there and kind of guess a matter or so.
Well, here's how that would work is, is if we can, if we decide to go forward, I on the front end will come up here and either get Dustin or get county commissioners, and y'all can give me a map, you can ride with me, show me whatever, and we'll spend an hour or two hours coming in your district, and I'll get all the information, GPS coordinates, pictures and all that, and I'll make the determination, yeah, this probably won't work, or anything I think will, I'll get it sent to A M and let them send the inspector down to go from there. That's how that works.
Okay. Dave, thanks for being with us today. We'll have a disagreement, we'll ask our county attorneys to review it and report back to the commission.
Sounds good. Thank you, Dave.
Dave also represents the Cement Association, so if you ever have any questions about cement using it for reclamation, he's helped us in the past with that, so he's going to be your contact if you have any questions on using cement.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Judge.
Yes.
On number one right here, Sheriff Moon just sent me a message, said he couldn't be here today.
Okay.
But he wanted if we could get that on there Tuesday or.
Or Tuesday. I think we could, I think we could just roll back to Tuesday. I see our number five person is not going to be able to be here today, but will be here Tuesday. So Sheriff Moon can't make it today, so no objection, we'll just roll into the Tuesday meeting. No, then we'd have he and our number five guest for Tuesday. Okay, do we have Mr. Jonathan Crosby with us? Mr. Crosby, you're recognized. And you're from the Waste Corporation of Alabama?
Yes.
Okay.
First of all, thank you for letting me come here to be for a few minutes.
Sure.
I've been in communication with Mr. Dick for quite some time. Y'all've got two pieces of property that, I don't know if you'd be interested in selling, but you've got like 1.2 acres that go all the way around all four corners of the property. And the second piece of property is our corporate office is actually looking for a transfer station in county up here. We did not know that if y'all would want part ways for your unit that's up there. I don't know if that's considered locust fork or.
It's in A M. Yes, in District 1.
So we just wanted to kind of bring it up before, maybe for a discussion down the road for that unit and one that's up in the landfill.
What would your plans be of a transfer station?
Would be trying to do county's trash. We've done, I've got two divisions in Birmingham. One is off of 280, and the unit up here, we do a lot of residential trash, front row trash off of 280 and south. Up here, we like to start doing the same thing.
Would you be using 48-footers out there or 40 cubic yard containers?
We would try to use them, try to try to look as possible, but it's, we'd have to negotiate with y'all.
But the trucks would be coming in for.
Yes, sir. We would want to bring another unit back up to be where you're tending for, could be used, or else not get any back away from the transfer station. Would like to ultimately go with the, start doing direct to county trash, and see if trash in one county, and then keep it in any county.
Okay, now, sir, we put that public bid there so often, and it may be that that comes up later this year. Does anybody know for sure?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's a three-year bid.
Yeah, I asked Mr. Nick to.
We have an extension option. There is an option to extend if there is a request to extend. What month is that?
We put it out to bid in December last year, I mean, three years ago, in 2018.
We recommend it about three months advance. It's going out to bid on that.
The contract, I think, wasn't effective until April.
So other areas.
Yes, sir. Well, we've got pretty much about nine years, so we have county, and parts of Shelby, 10 years. All of the residential front row services. This unit up here, it's been mostly roll-off, which y'all know one of the places that we do most is roll-off up here. And we're wanting to bring that unit, that we have a children's system up here, start running residential front row services up here. I've got a positive date for the cities, counties going when I didn't have, that I asked Dick, you know, he'd work on it for lack of wish, a part of dates, but also.
Is y'all's trucks handled or handled?
Tyler County wired singles, but, and we just had them on the cities up the valley. And my point of view, and for what I've seen, when you get a hard truck with a single axle, you get all the way on four tires instead of eight. I've seen them get more damage than that in a truck, but not be happening. But that's a best bet, that's a best bet. That's not an issue.
There's weight differences. It's quite significant, though. Yes, sir, the paddles.
Yeah, that's, we see that as a problem. You know, most of our rural roads were not ever, not built with that in mind, so they are pretty tough on them.
And if that's like, that's a best bet, that's not an issue. Single or double truck. It's just a best bet.
Does you like to be considered?
Yes, sir.
And included in that process? I got you. Any questions, gentlemen, at all? Okay.
You have a call?
I do. I'll ask you a couple hours. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, so we don't have a name associated with number five.
They did not, they did not, weren't sure who was going to be able to come. A lady called me the other day and said that they have received a grant or money from a DECA, I assume through COVID, to help in rural areas where there's homelessness associated with COVID or evictions, and they just, they just want to, you know, speak to the commission briefly. So I don't have a, they couldn't tell me who was coming.
Okay, okay. Okay, gentlemen, we ready to move on to new business? Okay, number six, of course, is to consider our minutes from our July 13th meeting and our July 22nd special call meeting. Number seven, to consider approving the claims for the month of July. Encourage you to look at those. If you have any questions, let our commission office know. Number nine, number eight, is to consider those resolutions that Mr. Green and Mr. Smith talked with us about earlier. We went ahead and gave them local resolution numbers that would be easy to reference in our minutes, once they're spread upon the minutes. So again, each of these resolutions deal with one phase of the tax renewal, provided that we're in favor of passing those on Tuesday. So if you have any questions further, feel free to further talk to me or our superintendents of education about that.
On the Blood County website, we would explain that, what that tax is, and this renewal is, nothing to be added. So the people of Blood County do look on that, they can see that it's something that needs to be fast and reach that 10 mill, or we're going to lose all state funding.
Yeah, right, very good. Yeah, I think that as a follow-up to our meeting on Tuesday, that certainly be appropriate to get as much good and accurate information out there as we could.
I think it's also the three mill, three mill split that makes sure everybody knows it's separate. Well, I don't think they're on three mills in the county.
That's correct.
Has their own three.
Right. Yeah, that's right. That's all good points. It's just the two and the four mill that is shared based on student population. All right, very good. Number nine and number 10 is broken down into two different resolutions, although we received from Kevin Kessler of Community Consultants late yesterday, he's combined those into a single resolution. And what Kevin's job going forward was is to get competitive quotes for the wetlands delineation required by Army Corps of Engineers, and competitive quotes from the three providers to do the native tribe Phase 1 archeological study at Cleveland property. And he has provided that resolution to us and combined them both into the single resolution. Goodwin Mills in Kaywood is the low quote at $3,200 for the wetlands delineation, and the low quote for the Phase 1 archeological survey is with MRS Consultants LLC with a quote of $4,000. And so Dustin, I've heard, of course, of Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, the MRS Consultants, I was not familiar with. Are you familiar with them?
Yes, sir. That's who we have always used in the past for federate projects.
Okay.
They did, they did a good work.
Okay. So that resolution, going through that proper procurement process, keeps us in line with all the requirements of the DECA in regard to the grant funding provided to the county for this project. Would you have any questions or concerns about that? I'll try to figure out a way to partner with them. We applied for the community developed block funds if the Water Works Board would go forward and put, extend their line, because their line already goes into Kylea Road and extend their line up there. The gentleman that we've worked with over their capital improvements, Mr. Derek Murphy, has been very good to work with. He's worked real hard with his team to put, try to put something together to make this work. But the final result of that was, due to the growing demand of water that they sell to the Pine Bluff Water Authority, and demand for new customers in that area, they don't feel like they can proceed on this until they upgrade their water line up Highway 79 out of Jefferson County into Blood County. Currently, that's an 8-inch line, and to meet the needs of serving Kylea Road and the growing demands of Pine Bluff Water Authority, they feel like that they have got to upgrade that line to a 12-inch line. And their commitment is that they will be working on that, the engineering, the permitting processes over the coming year, and get that done so that we can come back and visit this. So Commissioner Washburn and I had to make the unpleasant contacts with people there that we've been working with and for, but they understand there's just nothing that we can do until that water line is upgraded. Now, that put us in a crunch that we sometimes get in with community development block grant. That, an application has to be submitted in about two and a half weeks from now, and we do not want to miss this opportunity. So since we had been looking at a project in the District 4 area, we tried to isolate, is there anywhere that we might could put in for a project to buy some tar and gravel for roads that would in turn meet the low and moderate income level? So we have put several maps together this morning. Commissioner Washburn's assistant, Tanya, here just picked up the maps. It's going to require a door-to-door survey, but he It's going to require a door-to-door survey, but he would like to survey the Lehigh Road, the Philadelphia Road and the Reed Schoolhouse Road residents to see if they would meet the low and moderate requirements to submit an application so that, uh, he could apply for, or the county commission could apply for a community development block grant, which would be very similar to what we did in District Two for Black Road and that area up there. So, uh, if meeting commission's approval, noting that we can't go forward on the Kyle Road, then we would have a resolution provided to us by the, um, community consultants. And if we try to go for a community development, community enhancement grant, uh, the total we could get would be three hundred thousand dollars. It would require a one hundred thousand dollar grant match, but we would provide that through our in-kind services. So the work that Commissioner Washburn would actually do with his men and equipment will be sufficient to meet that. And that said, Dustin, would you elaborate on that any further?
Uh, yes, sir. I've got a map here. The commissioners want to see what we're thinking about. This would be similar to the Black Road Grant Project where we receive funding. Uh, Commissioner Washburn, uh, could reclaim most of the road. I think most of the road's going to need to be reclaimed and then build the road up in some spots, do some shoulder corrections, some ditch improvements and, uh, and use hot mix asphalt in places, uh, to level out some areas. And then, uh, probably put a, a double shot on top of that. So, um, that grant, Black Road Grant, turned out really well. We ended up at two hundred and fifty or sixty thousand dollars total and it was for ten miles. This is for nine point one miles, uh, and, and we're asking for basically the same amount of money, cost or a little bit more now than they were then. So I think this is a doable project. Uh, if we can get the low mod requirement, then I think we'd have a good chance of getting it funded.
Um, and again, the only way we can prove that, isolate that area and prove low and moderate income is through a door-to-door survey. That's where somebody from the county asks, actually knocks on the door and takes some information and learns if there's people with disabilities that live there, if there's how many's in the household, what's their income range and so forth. So, uh, I think, uh, Tanya plans to begin working on that this afternoon. Um, and we've got the maps ready for her this morning. So, what do you think, guys? Would it be okay to switch that over and try to pursue this if it meets the qualifications?
Yes.
Okay.
This is fine with me. What I said.
Okay.
I don't really benefit from my district last year when it was done up there.
So, um, I went down and rode these roads. I, I tell you, I have to admit, I, I don't know that I've ever been to the, up completely to the end of Lehigh Road, but it got feeling pretty snakey down there. That was a long road. I, I just, I guess, had forgotten if I had ever been all the way to the end, how, how long it was in there. So, uh, as soon as I got back to the office, I pulled it all up on the map, saying, where was I? So it's, uh, it connects in there pretty close. It's not far across the river to Hayden and then you were really right on the backside of county line.
You weren't far from the Chevron to Hayden.
Yeah, right, right. So, uh, I got a little bit lost in there. But I just, and, and not to pass any kind of judgments here at all, but just observing the, uh, uh, residents and they're going to be probably somewhere between a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five, um, places to, to survey. And I did that just by counting the mailboxes along the road. But this is prob, maybe the only place in the District Four area that would meet low and moderate income. So I think that
And also.
Possibilities that we are pretty good.
At the end of Lehigh Road, there is a bridge there that we, their county has recently closed that we've had issues with throughout the years. So this, this is, you know, another positive for that community. You know, they've had a bridge recently closed, so this could be a positive.
And I haven't traveled a long way back around.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yeah, this is their, the bridge was their connection to county line, so this.
Well, gentlemen, we'll have.
The status on the bridge?
It's currently closed right now.
What are we looking at?
Uh, we've discussed it with Commissioner Washburn, um, so we're still trying to come up with a game plan.
Something can be fixed and real quick, Wendy.
Uh, it would take a large amount of money to fix it, so trying to find that funding.
Yeah, yeah. I have a few questions. What, what, another question I had, looking at the map. So Dean's ferry once crossed the river.
That's right.
All right, but Lehigh didn't cross the river. Was there a creek or something?
It's like a backwater.
Yeah.
Creek or a backwater.
It's, it's a backwater.
I didn't probably go up past it.
It's a little concrete structure that's, it's been there, I mean, forever. It's more or less, I'm picking two years old, it's not. But anyway, it's a concrete structure that goes underwater and that's part of the problem today.
It's short chain.
And, and to keep part of that, to answer Commissioner Calvert's question there, that bridge has never had a head wall on one side, right? I mean, it's, it would be a, pretty much starting from scratch down there.
That's correct. To get it out of the floodway where it didn't flood.
Yeah, I've seen it underwater several times and it's.
It goes underwater several times a year.
Yeah.
The, the water from the river backs up into that, that creek, so.
Well, does anybody know if it's a good fishing hole? Probably. All right, well, gentlemen, we'll have that resolution on there and encourage, uh, Commissioner Washburn and his crew. And I'll try to get down there and do some work on that, uh, with them over the weekend as well. Okay, number twelve, gentlemen, I don't know quite as much about this, but we do have a proposal from Diversified Computer Systems, which is a SIMS provider, uh, for Procore Management System proposed. And they're proposing to do a revenue loss analysis and calculation for us in regard to the American Rescue Plan and other compliance services. And I think, gentlemen, some of y'all may have been on a, uh, a conference call with them or, or something. Does anybody can share anything more with us about that or do we have some information in our pack?
You don't have information in your pack. Uh, those are two different things, the Procore Compliance Support Management System is, is one thing. I have a, a quote that they've actually sent me something else this morning, just, that's, uh, twelve thousand dollars a year. And then separately is the revenue loss analysis calculation that we will have to have, whether we do it or someone else does it, before, uh, August thirty-first, compliance with the, uh, American Rescue Act.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, I'll, I'll try to spend some more time learning about that between now, but anybody else got any information on that?
Well, myself, Mr. Calvert, Dustin, I'll sit in on a webinar with them. I'm not so sure we have the grand money loss. I don't know about you, Dustin, Mr. Calvert, because we got so many road grants up in the District Two area that's probably going to hurt that, you know, I don't know if that four thousand is worth it or not. About the rest of the program, I don't know what kind of things about.
Yeah, the, um, so you have to make that decision before the thirty-first if you want to apply, uh, your funding from, from that act towards the revenue loss. And, and like Commissioner said, I, I think with the amount of, we have two grants, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece. That's five hundred thousand dollars that, uh, would fall in that fiscal year. So I don't know that, that we're going to get anything back from that. I think Commissioner Calvert mentioned possibly just, you know, putting it on there and applying for it and see if we do. Um, but that would be the commission's.
Yeah, I think that just having it on record is basically all we'd be doing. But you have to put everything, anything that ran through our system has to be on that. And, you know, that's, that's four thousand dollars. We're not going to look back and say that we had a loss and gain anything. But my understanding is if we ever went back, if it took so many years to do this, if we needed to go back, if we didn't have this, we couldn't ever go back.
Well, it's my understanding that you have, that you have to figure it, you have to figure it whether you do it or somebody else does.
You have to report a loss or a gain.
Yeah, you got, you got to give a, an amount.
Yeah, we're not going to be able to benefit from what they're saying, that we're spending four thousand dollars. We're not going to benefit because there's no money to regain back to show that we had a loss between.
But it's also my understanding, and I may be wrong, that if we, if we show, we've got to show that number as a baseline and even going forward and over the next few years, they can go back and say, you've lost revenue. It's like, uh, it's like we're looking backwards, but we're also looking forwards. It's got, you've got to have a baseline. This goes back all the way to twenty sixteen, the numbers do. You've, we've got to go back to twenty sixteen. And it's my understanding from this that your, uh, your federal funds, which are grants and things, it's all that, a lot of that's backed out. And they're looking at your, your other, it says all non-federal funds that are included in the accounts, whether those come directly from federal or state, uh, you've got to identify them. And, but I think there's something, I, I talked to John Bullard about it yesterday and it's my understanding, there's a lot of stuff you back out that, that we have to identify for them, yeah.
It's recorded.
We can back out the, we can back out the federal stuff, but, you know, we may.
That wasn't ever said in the call.
Well, we talked, we talked about it. They said you'd have to include it.
That's what I thought.
Well, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm under, misunderstanding.
Kind of go back anyway on staff, that, that four thousand dollars is more than worth.
It's more than worth it when you look at the labor it's going to take.
I appreciate y'all recognize that because the, uh, that was going to be, my comment was, if it's, if we got to go through this exercise and provide something back, whether it helps us or hurts us, we've got to establish like a baseline or whatever we do.
And it'll take, it'll take some work to get it, to get them the information.
Yeah, it's a lot of work to get them the information, uh.
I don't necessarily think you can call it hurting because we, we may not show a loss and we, it's just a negative, it's just neutral.
Yeah, but if it goes back to sixteen, to me, that we might be able to show a loss because we did spend a lot of funding for the.
Well, let's consider doing that thing. I mean, and the reason, I'm, I'm, because I don't know how we get that done, because we're working on budget.
We're pushing the path.
Some of us will be, uh, going to the conference if we can.
Uh, the, the gentleman I spoke with said that they would, they would have to have the documentation. Like it would probably take me most of next week just to get him the documentation before August sixteenth. So a week from Monday, he says, no later than then for him to be able to get me a number back before the end of the month.
As far as the, the firm and all, we have not been good reports from them. And, uh, for the, everything else we get from them has been good. Now, it depends on where we head, how we spend the money for us, the other twelve thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, that's what, I'm, I'm, I want y'all to tell me a little bit more about that. I mean, I've got it here what they're offering, but what is that?
It just keeps up like a SIMS data system. It keeps up with every dollar spent and, you know, reason and, and all the, uh.
So for reporting back, when we, when we report back to the Treasury Department.
You just run a report. It's all there.
You have to do these reports quarterly, I believe is what they say. So it may be a good idea to have him talk with Scott and them to see.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything that Jackie said that I disagree with as far as what I'm familiar with. I, um, it is, it is a quarterly, quarterly reporting requirement. If they track the information, do they report it on behalf of the county?
I think we have to report on our own.
Okay. The, it's my understanding that you have to report all the grant proceeds received from state and federal. However, it's, it's revenue that they truly count, the loss of revenue, and we don't know what that is. And so, um, revenue is not necessarily grant proceeds, but, um, so I, I agree with you with your understanding. That's my understanding as well, but I'm not even sure if they have a full understanding of their offer.
I don't know if anybody has an understanding.
We're, uh, we're very much dependent on, on you and Jeff, you know, keeping us in compliance here. Uh, I, I would suggest maybe that y'all have a conversation with these folks as well as far as helping us understand if it helps us stay legally compliant.
We'll be happy to.
Because it's not, it's a lot in a way, and another way, that's not much money compared to what we're doing and what we need to, how, how we need to stay compliant.
And that's what I'm wondering, can the twelve thousand, can we pull it out of the arpa funds?
The consulting.
Yeah, I mean.
I think you can.
Twelve thousand a year, because it's a really good tool as far as reporting.
Well, you could pull legal fees out of it for this purpose, so, but we are special though.
Also, this is, this system is made up with ACCA background on what they're doing. So for all their attorneys, they set in place, so I think it'd be great for us to be able to hop in and.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're offering asserted to them.
Same system, and like I said, that's a good, our SIMS system, the road data, they're offering the same thing. ACCA is using that, but to their existing customers that didn't opt in, they're allowing us to, to do it.
If, if they spoon feed the information for the county to report, be, be best if they reported on behalf of them. But they just, like, here's, here's the data reported, that pays for itself without.
I can't answer that, but that's something that y'all could talk, I do know that Sonny's been in contact with them and they's ac, they actually, uh, made this software just for this, this situation.
Uh, he did, he did send me, uh, Mr. Floyd sent me an email this morning, just kind of, because I asked him some questions yesterday, so for some clarification. He said that even though the Procore, which is the big twelve thousand dollar thing, is doesn't, isn't effective until October first, he said that we would be able to utilize it, uh, with that revenue loss that has to be provided before the end of the month. He said, we will allow you to use the Procore once it comes online in August for no cha, charge until October first. So, um, he did send me that this morning.
Okay, sounds like this Scott and Calvert have a conversation between now and Tuesday and further advise of it. Sounds promising.
Yeah, I think.
Probably what we need to do.
Can I get that from you?
Yes, I'll give you all this information and it's got this contact.
I think the documentation is requiring, I think we'll have to keep up with it. We need a good system to keep up.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, uh, gentleman, number thirteen's not requiring any action nor does it need to be on the agenda for Tuesday. But we, uh, Mark worked over the last couple of days to just put you a list together, just so you've got a record.
Should look like the end of your.
Yeah, that's, uh, uh, it kind of recaps what happened in our special call meeting where we heard from people. And of course, uh, the, listed the amounts that we knew, uh, that were thrown out in that meeting. Some amounts were not specified. And of course, our legal counsel's recommendation at that time was for, uh, us to wait on a final ruling to make decisions. Do we have any updated information, gentlemen, about that? What, when the final rule might be?
I don't.
The public comment period's, oh, been over for a week or so, so.
It's usually, I don't want to say.
Speculation.
Yeah, it, it is. It is. It's, many times it's sixty days. I hate, I hesitate to say that before final determination because it could be ninety or a hundred and twenty. It's just complete speculation.
Okay. Well, this is just, we're trying to keep up with that and we, there, there's not been any additional contacts to my office since that meeting. So, uh, you know, I think, uh, I think these things may be the things that we have to give consideration to in one way or the other. So no decision today. We just wanted you to have that list and, uh, appreciate Mark working on that and pulling that together uh, for us to have for our records. Um, okay, on, uh, number fourteen, uh, we have included in everyone's packet the broadband study proposal by Saint and Associates, which is basically identical to the one proposed to St. Clair County. It's in a total amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. And, um, I was, I was really on fire there at one time for us to rush in and get this done to try to stay ahead of the curve with everything that we need. Um, I, I do want to report to you that since we have talked about this publicly and had the presentation, it was reported back in the paper, that I've had conversation with our state senator, who is on the broadband committee and the majority leader of the Senate of the upcoming year, and one of our state representatives, who is also on that broadband committee, um, and some further people on state level that feels like we need to just have, push the pause button here. The state has a very comprehensive study that a DECA has funded. It's cost a lot of money. It is a statewide study that will include all the addresses. Um, and they feel like that maybe that is going to provide to us what we need. So I wanted to present everybody with this proposal, get your thoughts on it. Um, it, it seems like that we don't need to be in a hurry making this decision. Um, it, it seems like that we don't need to be in a hurry making this decision. Any questions? If there's not, then I think we've got the proposal, we know what it'll cost, we know what it will do, and, uh, let's just continue working with our state officials. Thank you, sir. To see, uh, where we go on this. I know that I sent Mr. Kenneth Boswell, Director of ADECA, an email yesterday. He is gonna be in O'neal in September. I think we just continue to gather this information. Do you have any questions about that at all, man? If not, um, we move on to item fifteen, and, uh, Jackie, you and our Dustin, if y'all take that a minute, I'm gonna go and get me a cup of water, something to chug. Lynn, you get that from him?
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, thank you so much, Lynn. Appreciate that.
Uh, the, the only thing we had to bid in our office was the office supplies and the, um, oil changes. So, uh, we're gonna continue to buy off of, uh, cooperatives for our janitorials and for our paper products, that would be copy papers and so forth. And then one office was the sole bidder on office supplies, and we could probably buy off of a cooperative for office supplies, but, um, one office is here local and they're still open, and I think that's what we should do there.
They are so bitter.
Yes, they're so bitter, and that's, I'm just saying, I think we should still bid it as long as they're here and operating. Uh, and then, uh, Jeff Smucker has, has given us a quote, um, he's gone up, uh, a little bit, but, um, he's up, well, he hasn't gone up on just a regular conventional six quarts of oil, but he's also given us the synthetic oil option price, but he's the sole bidder also. So, that's all I've got.
Uh, Dustin? For my items, uh, each of the commissioners in the folder, they should have, uh, my bid recommendations. Um, so, for this fiscal year, we had to bid aggregate, plastic pipe, corrugated, corrugated metal pipe, asphalt hot mix, and asphalt cold mix. Last year, uh, in the bids, we gave them the option of renewing for two additional years. And so we contacted each supplier before we began this process and asked, uh, them if they would like to renew. And so the only suppliers that wanted to renew were concrete, so Kirkpatrick Concrete, uh, said they would be willing to renew for an additional year. Uh, and then for a multifed asphalt, Ergon said they would be willing to renew for an additional year. And then for large sandstone, Tremendous Stone said they would be willing to renew for an additional year. So, we didn't have to read across the board, uh, some of them doubled. So, um, we're gonna need to take that into account, uh, when we start doing our estimates for next year's paving projects. Um, for instance, some of our, our aggregate went from nine dollars, uh, to eleven dollars. So that's a two dollar increase, that's not too significant, but our corrugated metal pipe, uh, we had one bidder, Fallon Farms, it went from basically ninety cents per pound to a dollar ninety per pound, so that's a pretty big increase for, for metal pipe. Um, our plastic pipe, it increased a couple of dollars, uh. So, if you have any questions about the bids before Tuesday, just let me know, um, and that's all I've got.
We, we were actually gonna try to stockpile some pipe, plastic, and right now they're shorter than the bid. What comes out of China, what they make, you can grab.
Yeah. If you can buy aggregate between now and October one, and stockpile aggregate, that would be a good, a good thing to do.
They don't have it inside of their account.
Two is already stockpile all they got. I'd say a couple of rounds up.
No, but where did it come from?
They dig it out of ground.
So why can't they just dig more?
Well, that's a good question.
Finding the people to do it.
Yeah, it's not like a computer chip, I mean. It's there, it's available.
Oh. One spring's has actually been balled out.
They're not making seventy-eights or, or sixty-sevens either, though.
I'm hoping they'll get, might get a little better outfit since it's been balled out. I can't think.
I don't know any of them that's making sixty-sevens, we're gonna have to do part of our paving with fifty-sevens. They just ain't making it, and don't have a plan to make it again.
Okay, well, gentlemen, just consider this, if you've got any questions, call Dustin, and we'll take it up on Tuesday.
I ask questions to the attorneys, why is it so important to get bids out? And we have that, that happened to us last year. People wouldn't honor the bids. I mean, to me, it's, makes some legislation put in place to go back and re-track what they decided to give every mankind an opportunity. We got all local dealers that couldn't do it, but we had to quit buying and go to someone else, but nobody's feet been healing.
Well, you know, there's different ways to deal with defaults in a bid, and it, most of the time comes down to how strong or how big of a hammer you wanna have or take in that situation. Um, you know, it's, really, the legislation's not necessary because you can, you can put penalties in the bid upfront, you can, you can, you know, consider them, uh, someone you don't wanna do business with in the future, but that, you know, that's double X or two.
We only had the one vendor, though, that went up, and I know the plastic pipe vendor had it in place where his government bids was honored by the manufacturer, so he didn't actually eat it.
That's fine, but look over on the concrete mix, coal mix, all the no bids we got here, we got one. Is that all we're gonna end up with, mentioning?
Yeah.
Everybody going, no bid? Then where we gonna be?
Yeah. Yeah, we're, there was a, a bid recently with another client of ours, they, they, the individual or the company that was providing the service responded to the bid with no bids just like that, and they gave what, what they proposed instead was basically a no bid all around. Thank goodness there was another backup bidder in the weeds.
Where's that put our engineer, though? For us, even when we buy and we can't get it, we're jeopardizing everybody under the system.
Well, go back to that, we're about to rebuild. If there's no bid, we'll get reimbursed.
Good question, good question, cause, cause we have to show a, a bidding.
That's right, basically, it's the loss, I mean, this is my theory, that the law is put in place like that to show that you're treating everybody equal and you're not, you know, just giving contracts to the, your neighbor. But, um, but once you've done that, once you've created that, you're in the clear.
You go, can you then go and negotiate your own price?
If there's, if there's a sing, if there's a single bidder, yes, you can go to that bidder and say, look, Kim, you know, you willing to negotiate with us based on X, Y, and Z?
So, again, Fallon Farms was our sole bidder for corrugated metal pipe. So, this was a bad time to bid metal pipe, metal, metal's still high. December, it may not be. So in December, if you say, Mr. Fallon Farms, I'm not paying this, I'll pay you this, then they're the sole bidder.
If they say no thank you, then you're in a tough situation between now and then, so you can reject all bids and do it again, and that's, wouldn't you agree?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm gonna throw you another one, cause I'm on this coal mix.
Okay.
I got a place where I buy coal mix, they send no bids. I got mid sale that I don't use their coal mix, they send the bid, legally I gotta buy their coal mix.
Well, wait, now, what you're reading there is the slag.
Slag.
So if you look to the right there, that's the stone, that's the coal mix you buy. So there was several bids for the stone.
Okay.
The slag was the only one.
All right, I'll just look at the slag.
Yes, sir.
But to answer that question, if that had been the case, whatever the commission adopts as a whole and votes for, yes, you're stuck, if that were the case.
So, say that Dustin came up and he separates by mileage, can he still give me a no bid if it meets within my, I know you got an amount of money that Dustin goes through every time to make sure, calculates the amount, make sure it's still feasible for me to buy, same way we do the other two. Is that the same way on a no bid for him? Can he still look at that for us?
Doing it underneath.
Under a bid law.
Under.
Yeah, they send a no bid in.
Yeah, I mean.
That makes sense.
Yeah, each project, I know what you're doing, you're bidding the, the price of the materials to put on your project, but yes, if you bid the project separately, if it's a legitimate bid rather than an attempt to get around the bid law, yes, absolutely.
But you went out with all those bids.
Hey, any other questions about the bids, gentlemen?
Still don't like.
I don't either.
Crazy.
Okay. If not, item sixteen is to consider the, uh, uh, bid award for the water truck for District Four that we opened earlier today, and we'll certainly make that available to Mr. Washburn and see what he may, uh, want to do going forward. I think that if he does buy that truck, he's indicated that he would have to have some financing, so let's just let him look at it and see what he comes back with, whether he wants to continue to pursue that or not. Now, these bids on all these cars, that, that was not very much, I mean, what, what do y'all think? I guess we, some misses.
I guess so.
I believe the way the prices are right now, we'd bring more than that for scrap.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, so.
Consider more.
And what we, what we could do is, um, since we've got the bid, could they not just scrap them legally?
Well, we reject the bid and choose to sell it for scrap.
True.
Okay.
Which really that's.
And then bring the market back.
Right, exactly, and, you know, address it like you addressed many things in the past, authorize the sale in the best legal means possible, and, you know, since, I mean, you can reject this bid, no doubt, and, and proceed accordingly, you can.
I know the last truck we had that was no bid, we submitted, turned out sort of for scrap low price, and I think, when I figured out the time, it was three hundred dollars, not that much, it was up a little bit now.
Yeah, one of them set us up pretty good, pretty high one.
I guess my question is, could the sheriff's department themselves load them up and take them to the scrap people?
I don't know.
And sell them, instead of.
Well, you have, we've got an app with tanks.
Yeah.
You can, and he's got the means to do that.
He got the means to do it.
Yeah, he's got the means to do that.
All the, or all of these sheriff's department vehicles or, or that own by county.
They're, um, they're, they were paid for out of the general fund, I think that's what.
Okay, so, I mean, as long as you authorize it, yes, he can do that. But I, I think since it's your, since it's commission property, technically speaking.
I, I would wanna ask these other commissioners, I have a sheriff's, one of them, Karen Crenell Dix, and I keep it for, in time. If y'all need one, right now it's time to get one.
And I don't know, there's some of those, some of them aren't even running.
We use one to put on the side of the road.
Yeah, I have one these are not running.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind looking. But I think sheriffs and they always were actually just scrap, but, but I, oh, yeah, I wouldn't mind looking at one to see if it, you know, if it will do like you use.
He's helped, he has helped us, but we got some very high traffic roads around us.
Okay, if you don't take.
She'll find out one sixty this morning.
Okay, well, that's, uh, if any of you'd like to drop by and look at it, or please try to do that between now and Tuesday, and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll anticipate that we'll probably need to reject that bid and pursue some of the means of getting it out. Okay, uh, consider requesting bids for engineering vehicle, which is currently in your budget, is that correct, Dustin?
Yes, sir, we had budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars last year for a vehicle, so I'm not sure if we'll be able to find one for that cost, but we will try.
Okay. Any objections, go ahead and place this bid out.
Uh, I, okay. We're, we're out of, eighteen?
Eighteen.
You sending the bid out, but there ain't no new vehicles, so you sending out a bid for used vehicle?
Yes, sir.
How much you say you had?
Thirty-five thousand is what we had budgeted.
So what would you be requesting, like SUV or?
Bid a truck.
A truck, okay.
Are you still looking for a four-wheel drive?
Could get a four-wheel drive.
And if, and if it's more than thirty-five thousand, you've got some money in your budget you think you can cover it with?
Yes, ma'am.
So the question would be if it's okay to put the bid out, since that's already funded. Yes, Don?
Uh, just for information, in October, Aldot will be doing their sale, their GM Woods, that may be a avenue you may look at.
We've spoken with Aldot, and they, apparently they don't have anything right now.
Okay. Okay, nineteen is to consider approval for the request for bids for the animal adoption, um, center. Uh, they have an eight thousand dollar grant to go toward that, and could pay the balance from special donations that have been given. And Jackie, you know what they, are they looking at a, maybe a van?
They're looking at a van, and they won't, I mean, they're looking for a new, a used van. So, uh, Karen's really been investigating what's the best vehicle, what lasts the longest, she's getting all kind of information. So, uh, and I think she's gonna be here on Tuesday and make and elaborate if we need her to.
Okay, any questions there, gentlemen? Okay, if not, um, twenty be considered approval for District One purchase of a Motrim and controller. Um, should not exceed thirty thousand in consideration, Commissioner.
Yeah, uh, we got about seventeen years, I know that's a lot of welding and pin, pin replacements, but, uh, it's about to send us a better day, so we're gonna keep the existing tractor. The Motrim itself, the boom and deck is about twenty-two thousand, and the joystick and controller is somewhere around six thousand, so it should not exceed thirty thousand, that is in lieu of price increases these days.
Okay.
But I, I should have money to, in existing budget to, to pursue.
What's the name brand of that?
It's gonna be a tire.
I think that one's on it now.
Yeah. Yeah, we put one deck on, I'd say, we, we weld different pins and cushions and hand holders on it, it's down.
You get it, Commissioner, can I borrow it?
Believe it?
Yeah.
Have you seen my rug?
We don't need to use your old one. We did that for District Two.
The break-in.
I was gonna say, you can look at mine before you dream about it.
Yeah, that's, that's, that shit out of me, and the business budget, or the new budget, so.
And we, he thinks that we can get it off of a existing bid, um.
Yeah, I think, uh.
Bid a co-op or a.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't have to get it out.
That's, that's what we did last summer with tractor, draggering.
Okay, uh, twenty is to consider agreement with Paris Computer, you need to authorize Sheriff to sign for counting the software data conversion. Um, this is, yes, please.
Okay, uh, this is kind of give us some heartburn here, but this, this is, we had to postpone our, um, our software change until the first of next year, you know, our situation in the commission office, uh, they say they're giving us a sixty-six percent discount with that nine thousand dollars, but that's in addition to what we already paying them for the software itself. But because they had already converted part of our data, they'll have to do that basically again coming forward into, uh, the first of the year. So we don't, I did find out for sure that we do not have to pay for it until the time they do it, so it'll be next budget year.
Just need to consider it, buddy.
And, but it, uh, will need to get the agreement signed.
Any questions about that, gentlemen? If not, twenty-two is consider agreement with our Southern Health Partners, and make healthcare. Uh, it's basically the same agreement that we've signed every year, however, the agreement always has the escalation clause that they can go up to three percent, I think, or whatever the consumer CPI is, and this agreement would propose a three percent increase into, for that.
Which would amount at about?
About two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, I think, with the increase.
CPI basis, about four point one, right?
Yeah.
But we're already paying too, much too something now.
Yes, about ten, two se, two seventies or in the eighties, I want to get.
That would put us at about two ninety-eight?
Two ninety-eight, yes, is what it, is what it's gonna put us at. Of course, that takes in consideration, too, that, you know, we extended the hours and the nurses that's there, uh, to try to help us on our other care, and it seemed to work out, but it's. And so we'll ask the legal team to review that for any concerns. We have received the packet of information that comes periodically as warranted from the Mont County Healthcare Authority. They need to consider board appointments for places seven, eight, and nine.
Y'all have copies of those.
Yeah, there's a letter with the nomination resolutions in the folder, and there are six-year terms. Um, that, um, I would remind us all that when they send that letter, they send three names and their recommendation is actually. Yeah, the recommendation is actually the first name that's on the list. If you have any concerns or questions about that that I can answer, I'd be glad to.
Second page of the letter tells you.
Two, two, uh, I can't put my hands on that right.
Here, here.
Let me look at that just a second. Uh, two of the places would be reappointments. That would be Mr. Kevin Ellis and Mr. James Carr. Mr. Jerry Jones, who served on that, has timed out, and he will not be able to continue serving. And, um, so the recommendation begins for Mr. Ellis and for Mr. Carr. Uh, the place aid recommendation is Lady Sabrina Peebles. And, um, she is a experienced healthcare, uh, person that is, was highly recommended by them. So if you want to look further, or if we need to provide any further information, being the point of recommendations, we certainly would be glad to do so.
I have talked to Mr. Gard, he's willing to further the news of his.
Okay, very good.
Judge, back to the Southern Health Partners.
Yes, sir.
It's not a, um, CPI base rate increase, it's just a flat three percent, just like yesterday.
Okay. Okay, um.
So if they, if they go up flat rate three, that means they can still go up three more?
Yeah, I mean, I, well.
It's an annual adjustment.
I don't think so. I thought, I said it was based on CPI, but I think I was wrong about that.
Yeah, they were just saying this is an increase.
Oh, it's not based on.
Right, I, I said that, and I was wrong about that.
Yeah, they're just saying we're increasing because of the pandemic, three percent across the board basis.
Which is two-eighty-nine, four-sixteen.
Plus an increase three percent.
Two-eighty-nine, okay.
Plus a ninety-eight. Pretty um, increases.
I was wrong.
Well, I think the contract though is, I guess I misunderstand it a little bit, but they, they're going up three percent. But in the contract says, within that year, they go up three percent without cost. It's not that way? Okay, that's what.
I don't, I, I don't think that that's the way it was. I think it's just.
An annual adjustment.
We'll take a look at it.
That's, we'll do that. Make sure. Okay, uh, twenty-four is, uh, REMLAP District fire recommendation to reappoint, uh, Mike Taylor, a five-year term. Uh, Commissioner Washburn wanted to relate to y'all that he was, he was finding that, um, reappointment. And then we did have a sale, twenty-five, a sale of a sheriff's asset. No, we didn't have a sale, it was.
It was wrecked.
And we received an insurance payment of nineteen thousand, one-eighty-sixty-seven. And we consider budget amendment to make that available back for the purchase of another vehicle.
Uh, also right here, Hannah told me, we have a budget amendment that I'll need to add for Monday for the air conditioning unit, one of the air conditioning units at Family Services was struck by lightning, and we got the check back today, it's near, nearly twenty-five hundred dollars. I'll have an exact amount Monday.
That's on the insurance.
Yes, and we'll need to put that back into wherever we paid for that out of.
Okay. Okay, working on down to them, guys. Uh, twenty-six is theme of budget amendment for District One. Uh, we have budget amendments for District Two, predominantly theme amounts in a progress rail. District Three, theme reimbursement, um, and in District Four, um, reimbursement from Pine Bluff Water Authority, Mont County Nine-One, and progress rail. Get just a moment to look at those. Any, any questions or concerns? If not, I'll give a little brief update on the Veterans Park proposed to be added to, uh, Palisades Park. The last meeting that we had, uh, gentlemen representing the veterans here, we, um, encouraged them and reminded them that they needed to go back to the park board to make sure the tape had concurred. Words from the park board chairman, Mr. Andy Hale, and our, uh, park, um, director, Mr. Jeff Todd, is that they, the park board concurs with our plan. So it's up to us now for a final approval, but before I bring that back, um, I talked with the Land Water Conservation Fund representative at the DECA yesterday because we do have to have concurrence from park service on that. He said it may be something they would feel comfortable to lo- to approve on the state level, or they might have to go up to the national level because of LWCF money. So what they want me to do is send a, a detailed letter making the request, a map of the park that had an inset on it to show where this was located and tell them about it, and then they would either approve, reject, or ask for more information. So, um, so made that contact late yesterday once I found that out. So I will get that done in the next, uh, week or so, and maybe by the September meeting, we'll have some kind of answer about that. Would that mean everybody's approval on that? Okay. Okay. Updates, uh, Commissioner, anything on the engineering department to update further? About to wind that up.
Well, we waiting on, uh, the curtain wall would come in for the conference room, important concrete. Really wanted to wait till our guys got freed up for concrete. We've been working on some, some major issues that we've had on beauty of the green and all.
And on the jail addition, that's substantially complete. Uh, had one little bump in the road there a couple of weeks. Saw the bunk bed framework was delivered, and it was delivered with only a, uh, primer coat of paint. And, uh, we thought that was a complete mistake, but turned out that's what we spec'd in the spec. So we couldn't go back on that. But turned out that, um, Ken was able to, with some inmate help and equipment they had, they have, uh, rectified that situation for nominal cost compared to what it would have done on the contract. So he, uh, said he just happened to have a paint and body man ready, and he had the equipment. So it worked out to get that done. So I think we're very, very near completion there. Okay, uh, Dustin?
Yes, sir. Uh, each of the commissioners, this is for item thirty-three, Reboot Alabama Transportation Plan. Commissioners should have, this is our draft copy, uh, that we'll approve on Tuesday. Uh, I kind of want to go through it real fast and give a quick summary of what our plan is for next year. So we have these two accounts, the craft account, County Reboot Alabama Fund, and then the Federate Exchange Fund. And part of our Reboot Alabama, uh, policies and procedures are that you have to, we have to adopt this transportation plan every year in August, by August thirty-first. So from the beginning of this process, we decided to allot two, two commissioners per year, uh, an amount of money so they could do roadway projects. The first year it was six cents, then it went to eight cents. Well, this October one is going to go to ten cents, which our estimated amount from the ACCA at ten cents was a little over a million dollars. That's, that's where I came up with this number right here. It's the estimated annual revenue, one million, twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. That came from the ACCA. I mean, Ms. Jackie have, have looked at last year's how, how we did. We were projected to get a little over eight-hundred thousand dollars, and right now we're, it's looking like we're going to be somewhere around seven-hundred-seventy to seven-hundred-eight thousand dollars. So a little under that projected amount. That could have to do with COVID, there could be a lot of factors, uh, plays into that. But I based my estimate, my transportation plan off of that ACCA amount. So my plan is still to give, uh, District Three and Four, they get the money this year, so to give them five-hundred thousand dollars apiece. And then next year at this time, we can reevaluate that and see if we are in fact, that revenue is bringing in a million dollars a year. You got a question?
Yeah, I was going, on, on, on that you're talking about, this year's projected, it's seven, seven-seventy, seventy-eighty. We're projecting a tick over, so we need to keep that to reimburse. Like I say, this year we fall short.
Yeah.
Next year there's a little overage. So, so I'm playing.
Yeah, I think that's way short.
That way, like I say, when you get it, it's, it don't get that million. It's forty thousand short, and the, the next year it's over forty. And so that would revert back to them two districts that didn't get it.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, you still, I mean, if you're approving for them to have five-hundred thousand dollars right now, they get that money. Uh, it'll just keep, we just need to keep an eye on the cash balance to make sure we don't ever get below that. So, um, so we still have Naismith Road Bridge on here. Uh, we've bid that project out, construction should start in September, uh, so it'll still fall in fiscal year twenty-two. Right now, we're projected to spend about three-hundred, three-hundred-ninety-seven thousand dollars on that project. Uh, we'll, we'll get another check for four-hundred thousand dollars on October one. So currently we have six-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars in our Federate Exchange Fund account, and then we'll get four-hundred thousand dollars on October one. Uh, so we'll, we'll have right over a million dollars in that account. So we're projecting about four-hundred thousand dollars of that to go to Naismith Bridge. So that remaining six-hundred thousand dollars of, that's at the bottom here, that's our total. We haven't, we haven't put a project towards that money yet because we may have overruns on Naismith Bridge. When we finish that project in the spring, we can come back and add a project to, to this plan. For our craft account, uh, County Road Twenty-four is in District Three, that's the road that Commissioner Calvert would like to, to do. Uh, he had a, a carryover from his first year of forty-six thousand dollars. So he'll be getting five-hundred thousand dollars plus his carryover amount, forty-six thousand dollars. So he'll have five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars to spend on that road. Uh, I made a mistake here that I called just a second ago, uh, where it says two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for competitive bid and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for public works. I need to add that forty-six thousand dollars to those two numbers. And I'll, I'll, I'll change that when I get back to my office. So his total craft amount here at the end should be five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, District Four, he's chosen to do Spunky Hollow Road and Honeycutt Road. Uh, he'll actually have six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. He'll get the five-hundred thousand dollar allotment, and then his first year he had a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars that he did not spend, that will roll over for those two projects. So any questions about the transportation plan?
Dustin, how would you, uh, kind of replay for what's the servicing? What your plans are, because Dustin's handling that.
I've got, you know, for it to be patched, uh, there may be some base failure areas that we'll have to fix, uh, and then we'll resurface it. We currently have a bid right now with Whittaker for paving. That bid will expire at the end of December, so we'll have to rebid it at that time. So I can give you a better answer in January when our bid comes in to see what those bid costs are.
I wish, uh, our first gentleman was, uh, here, it'd be a good time to, to show that we are making progress on these road projects. We, uh, uh, what we was able to do with our portion of the one cent sales tax and roads that we have paid, and then this additional amounts coming to our district, really, really, if these people could just give us three or four more years, it's really going to make a tremendous difference in, in our roadway system. So, uh, I, I know our commissioner doing the best they can, and it's got, they got to have a little more money than they've ever had. You don't continue to make progress.
Yeah, Tama Hagan's Road included, last year we done just right at twenty-five miles. They have about, theirs was about six, which they paid for. We done, this year we've done almost another twenty-five miles when we get these last two. And, yeah, we still have roads that are awful.
Yeah.
But it's just going.
And, uh, the Chambers County engineer is doing a presentation at the conference, and he's highlighting several counties and how they've spent the rebuild Alabama money, and we're one of the counties that he's going to highlight from what, the amount of roadway mileage that we did our first year, you know.
That's, that's a great accolade. Well, I can't help but sometime to stop and think a minute about all of our major collectors and where we would be right now if we had not done what we did back just a few years ago to try to make, provide some plan forward. I mean, can you imagine how those major collectors, the condition they'd be in right now?
Just like County Roads Twenty-seven is about one-point-seven million. If I don't, we don't get but a million, uh, that's no way I could do that. Took, it took, uh, four years to go to scene that project, just now. But you know, that is coming on a ten-year anniversary. Roads are going to have to be looked at.
Again.
Our first round major road is coming up.
That's what I mean, that's, yeah, it's a ten-year anniversary on that. It's gone, and we got to look forward to where we're going to put that money again.
Yeah, and, but thank, thank, thankfully we got something to, you know.
Yeah.
That's, that's what's going to be so good. We like those, I don't mean to sidetrack, but keep doing.
Yeah, oh, each of the commissioners should have these fund accounts that Ms. Jackie printed off for them. And just kind of for full transparency, I just want to go through these numbers and, and show the commissioners how these accounts look in our accounting system. Uh, the first sheet you've got here is the actual, that's the actual cash amount that's in our County Reboot Alabama Fund. It's eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. So the decisions you make on this transportation plan, of course, like we was talking about, are based off the revenue that we're going to receive over the fiscal year. The actual amount is, cash amount that's in that account right now is eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. It's at the end of your transportation plan, if you got this sheet.
Yeah, it's right behind you.
If you turn to the next page, the budgeted expenditures, it'll show for each of your districts, it'll show the amount that was budgeted in last fiscal year. Uh, so, and it should show the, uh, show the carryover amounts.
Carryover, the unexpended over there on the side is.
Yes, so unex- unexpended amount would be your carryover amounts. So at any point in time, if you ever want to know how much is in your craft account, Ms. Jackie can run this report and show you. And this will be running total throughout the years, so the money and carryovers always going to stay on that account for the district.
Yeah, like on the annual budget, the total carryover, say Commissioner Calvert had was two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, and then he's got the forty-six thousand left, so that's your, that's what he carried over actually.
Yeah, he carried over the forty-six thousand, the amount unexpended.
Right, that's what's left, yeah, that'll carry over to next year, yeah.
Okay, um.
Explain something there.
Sure.
No, it looks like a lot of carryover. What happened on that, that project? There was a lot of work done on that project, it was done by our forces, but also some things was done that was not a bid process. We go through a bid, so we couldn't use it, so it actually come out of my fund, my regular funds. That's where I got that bunch of carryover. Normally, we'd have worked out a lot closer than that.
So you couldn't get reimbursed from things?
Yeah, couldn't get reimbursed for a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I just assumed that I might go back and get reimbursed from last year on my five, but we didn't have them. That project, I replaced all my five last year, so I don't have some carryover more so than I thought.
And that's the reason why you see the carryover, I'm just going to explain that.
Yeah, but that's, that's true. But now we're about to consider a transfer back to District One.
Yes, sir.
That's going to lower that four-hundred thousand.
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay.
We don't, we going home.
Well, I just put out, that, that, that four-hundred thousand is not going to carry over to next year for him.
That's right.
Because we're about to reimburse.
I'm not going to reach it for a full one.
He'll probably still have some.
So you'll have some.
It's gonna, it's gonna be three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
I will tell you, Ms. Jackie, we'll be ringing you off a little bit, you ain't got something done.
But she'll be nervous about it.
She'll be nervous. She got me nervous.
And then the, uh, the next sheet is our anticipated, uh, revenues. You can tell from this sheet that we've got six-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. You can tell from this sheet that we've got six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in the last fiscal year. That's what we've received, and we budgeted eight hundred thousand dollars. So just dividing that number by ten payments that we received, and then if you add the two that we're going to get, you come up to seven hundred seventy to seven hundred eighty thousand dollars. So we could read, reach eight hundred thousand dollars, but I just don't, no, I'm just basing it off of projection.
Dustin, back to the prior page on District Two. Will Commissioner Trump also have some reimbursements for this year?
He will, yes, sir, he's...
I'm asking these kind of because I'm just thinking budget for next year and how we, we'll work closely together.
Yes, sir.
I haven't planned, give me a mind, kind of just waiting, I got my favor.
Yeah, okay, very good. Good deal.
The next sheet is our Federate Exchange Fund, so the actual cash in that fund is a six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar amount that's on, on our transportation plan. And then we have our budgeted expenditures. So we didn't, we only spent sixty-four thousand dollars out of that fund last year, that was on the striping on County Road Nine. So most, that was projected to go to Naismith Bridge, which we're still in this fiscal year, so it, it will get done in this fiscal year, but some of it may roll over to the next fiscal year. And then the last sheet is, is the receipts that we've received, which is the four hundred thousand dollars that we received last...
It just comes in one check, so when you get that, you know you're done.
I just wanted all you guys to see that, all the commissioners to see that, be aware of those numbers, just kind of for transparency, that we need to keep an eye on this craft, the actual cash in the craft amount, as we do these transportation plans every year to make sure that we're still...
And I'm glad you're emphasizing that, Dustin, because that, that makes me think of something else that, that we need to always remember about is, you know, when we budget on any of our funds, not roads necessarily, but any of our funds, we budget a cash to start the year, and then we got the budget, what we think we're going to take in, so the cash plus what we take in, and then if we, at the end of the year, we anticipate maintaining a strong cash balance to carry us through the rocky times that we might experience from time to time. But when we have things come up through the year that we have to expend that were unbudgeted, then, then that is going to decrease that cash balance at the end of the year because we did not plan for that. So that's one of the things that, that we always want to keep an eye on to make sure that we don't have budgeted money left over, but we don't have cash to back it up. And that's exactly what you're saying, and that's true in all of our funds, so we have to keep an eye on that.
Well, you said, was that the final number we're going to come up with, three hundred and thirty-six?
Yeah, that'll be...
What I'm, what I'm spending out of crowd.
Yes, sir.
You're going to give me an exact amount before Tuesday?
Any questions on...
Yeah, no more. So if I want to spend the existing or the remaining, we need to add a road.
That's correct.
Can we do that?
I thought it's too late.
No, he, he could add, do you think you'll do it? Do you think you'll do it in?
Next year.
You'll do it after October one?
Yes.
Okay, then we need to add it to this transportation plan. So you got to, you're going to have about, yeah, you're going to have about seventy, seventy thousand, sixty-seven thousand.
Okay, but you're going to do it next year?
Let me answer this thing, you know, being used to talking about doing the Hayes Bridge, can a portion of that be used on the bridge?
Definitely, yeah.
Of the craft, of his crafting?
Hayes Cemetery Bridge, any, any contracts or any bid.
You, you want to contract it out, or you want to do it?
No, I'm just talking about if we do it, any of our bid out of that money could be...
Material, yeah, material.
I was going to, we'll add it to Montezon's.
Okay.
Okay, anything for...
I would like to say that, the bridge projects we got comes along, what you was talking about a while ago, that in first year I came here, we're waiting on years and years seeing a bridge project.
That's true.
Now we got bridge projects every year going up.
I'm down to, with the bridges I've got, I think we're down to two, this Love River Bridge. After we got Big's Ferry open.
That's right.
Hayes Bridge and Hayes Cemetery, the only two that's open, but Love River.
Yeah, we're making slow and steady progress, but we're making progress, and we have a plan, that's the most important thing. We have, we have money and a plan, and that's the most important thing.
That's right.
For item thirty-four, the transfer from the Craft District One amount, the actual amount is going to be three hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-three cents. And that's for District One's approved projects that were in last year's transportation plan. Those were all...
That's going to make your budget look better.
I didn't, I didn't run the numbers, I shouldn't have. That, that was a number of, eleven roads, I think, it was a lot of roads.
I think we had eleven or twelve roads, and, you know, about twenty-five miles.
Yeah, so that was very significant for District One. It came on, it came in under budgets.
Okay, any sort of data on County Seven?
County Seven, not a lot of progress with construction, just with the amount of rain that we've had. They've started back working here recently, but we've had to deal with a lot of questions from FEMA with their environmental side, so I've been asking, I've been asking those questions over the last three weeks. Don't I can give a better update on that?
On the approval process?
The, the historical review is the last final step for the FEMA obligates the money. So between Dustin and myself, we've asked, asked a lot of questions about that project, so we're getting close.
Yeah.
And once, once that money is obligated, then we will submit already the engineering costs, everything that's construction on bid, we'll submit that to the state, so we're just waiting on that, that obligated now.
Saturday afternoon, we had, it was just a huge rain come through about three o'clock, and it's just, it's a, it's a big mud hole, it all is, and they came in.
Well, I think, looking at the situation, is glad it slowed down because this hadn't even been approved yet. You know, it's been approved one time, but we had changed things up, so we got a project moving on that's, what, eight hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Hadn't been approved by yet, but we may end up having to, there's a chance we may have to pay for it out of pocket. It's not good right now.
That's not too good.
Okay, we got a request for executive session from Councilman Gentleman, that still holds?
Yes, good. Ms. Stewart has a letter.
Okay, all right, then we'll have our announcements, as noted. We have planned a, a short budget meeting following this meeting, so we'll try to get everybody out of here by twelve o'clock for lunch, and we'll take a quick break and convene back to consider some items in the twenty-twenty, twenty-two, like, twenty-twenty-two.
Too many twenties there.
Say that section right there, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two.
It's like stuttering.